I see by the clock on the wall that it is two minutes after seven. I would like to call to order the Tuesday, April 2, 2024, meeting of the mound planning commission. This is a regular meeting. Roll call, please. Jennifer.
Commissioner Archibald.
Here.
Commissioner Rosner.
Here.
Commissioner Sadstrom.
Here.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Chair Good.
Here.
Commissioner Heel.
Here.
Commissioner Wagner.
Here.
And Councilmember Mackenzie.
Here.
I have not seen any amendments to the agenda. And seeing none, chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as distributed.
Motion to approve as distributed.
Second.
We have a motion to second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay. Motion carries. We have the March 19, 2024, special slash rescheduled meeting minutes. You had them in your packet. Are there any changes, additions, deletions noted?
Motion to approve is written.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay. Motion carries. Board of Adjustment and Appeals, Planning Case 24-02. Recommendation slash review, variance for house remodels slash additions, project at 4360 Wilshire Boulevard applicants, Paul and Kristy Wolf. Ms. Sarah.
All right, good evening. As you stated, the application for variance is at 4360 Wilshire Boulevard. The property is located on the north side of Wilshire Boulevard, just near the bridge that goes across to Spring Park. Currently, if you had a chance to look at the property, it is a single-family home with a two-car attached garage. The project or the home was constructed in 1960. So this lot is considered a lot of record, and so we'll have those relief that we have in the zoning district. As we included in the packet, staff did find in the file that there was a 1995 variance that did allow for the construction of a back deck. And it did reduce the rear yard setback by 13 feet. Actually, I should say the lake shore setback, which is normally 50 feet. It allowed a 13-foot intrusion into it. As was noted in the packet, applicant is proposing a multifaceted project, home remodel project. Most of the elements are meeting the zoning code. Really, the only element that is needing your review this evening is on the rear of the property. The applicant currently has a deck in the rear of the property, and they are planning on replacing it with a four-season porch, as well as a deck. The other elements that we'll just mention, they are planning on replacing the garage. There is a stoop on the east side of the house that will be removed, and that area will be kind of reconfigured with a little cantilever. There will also be some basement windows, some windows for basement bedrooms, and there'll be some window wells. So if you haven't seen those before, those are kind of the circular shapes. We don't see a lot of those on the variances that you have seen. And then the entrances will be adjusted. So the proposed home, these are all of the elements, kind of the different views for the elevations. The home will still primarily be a single family or a single level walkout. As you can see, you can also see from this kind of where the rear elevation is probably the best in terms of seeing the porch that's proposed and the adjacent deck. The applicant has indicated that underneath the deck, they'll keep concrete underneath the porch, but they will have landscaping underneath the deck. And I'll talk a little bit about that as it relates to hardcover. Comprehensive plan guides this area for low-density residential, and the applicant is continuing that use with the single-family home that's on the property. The zoning is R1A, so that is a residential designation. As I said, it is a lot of record. They are meeting the side and front yard setbacks with the changes that are being proposed. Hardcover-wise, the maximum hardcover for a lot of record is 40%. As we noted in the packet, there are a couple of errors with the survey. And staff, if you decide to recommend this to move forward, we'll work with staff to kind of get those things fixed. There's a small error that we noted just with the proposed survey kind of has the wrong hardcover calculations for existing. According to the existing survey that we have, hardcover is shown as under 40%. So if they want to move forward without a variance, they would need to keep proposed hardcover also under 40%. There was some question when we were working through the documentation about whether or not they would be able to meet the 40%. The deck, as I understand it from just the conversation I had today with the applicant, is they are proposing to not have any concrete underneath the deck. So as long as it has quarters, quarter-inch spacing between the boards, then mound policy is that you wouldn't have to count that as hardcover because you can have rain that goes through in between the slats of the deck. And so they would propose to put landscaping in that area. So at this point, my understanding is the applicant is not requesting a hardcover variance. If that's the case, we would adjust the conditions to make sure it's very clear that they would have to maintain that under 40% and the area underneath the deck would need to be clear about what it's going to be used and how much of it is going to be used so that we maintain that maximum 40% hardcover. The picture just kind of gives you the existing, which is currently a deck, and then the proposed. The variance that is being requested is because the proposed four-season porch is larger than the deck currently is, which will decrease the setback that they have to the lake shore. So the fundamental question for all of you is whether or not they have met the criteria for practical difficulties for the need for having a porch that will extend farther into the lake shore setback than the deck variance that they currently had. We did distribute this to the neighbors for comment, as well as to staff and agency and consultant review. We didn't receive any comments. I know staff has received a couple of phone calls from neighbors just questioning what the project was, but there weren't opinions given about good or bad about the project. But they did field some inquiries about it. Your consideration this evening is to discuss the request. It isn't a public hearing. The applicant is here to provide additional information and clarify anything that I can't answer. Once you have that information, then the requested action is to table it if you need more information and let us know what information you need, recommend city approval, city council approval or denial, and provide to us the findings either for approval or denial. We did provide a list of conditions in here. So if you were to recommend approval, we do have some conditions that are a starting point for that. Staff did not offer a recommendation. This feels like one of those cases where it's, it needs your perspective on whether or not it's a reasonable request just based on kind of how the history we've been going about folks and where we're going and understanding what variance is appropriate or not appropriate. Staff didn't feel like they could weigh in that this was particularly meeting or not meeting the practical difficulties considerations. If you need those, I did provide them. I have them with like what other criteria for variance. They are in your packet. We can certainly walk through those, and that should be a foundation for our discussion this evening. So with that, I can answer any questions that you may have.
I had a question about the governing bodies. You didn't really name them, but there's the Minnehaw Creek Watershed District, and there's LMCD. And I can't remember the jurisdiction specifically, but I assume they were consulted for something that would be moving closer to the lake.
So when we do any of these types of requests, the agency list that we send to involves anybody who is affected. So it would include all those agencies. DNR would receive it as well. And then internally, you know, the fire, building, planning, engineering, all of those. And then if it's on a county road usually, and it involves changes to the front, the county would receive it. It just gets distributed actually. It gets distributed at the beginning of the process so people can make comments at the beginning if they think something's missing.
Okay. I think you said you didn't get any comments back. That's the thing that surprised me because I didn't think they didn't give comments.
You didn't think they did?
I didn't think they ever didn't give comments. You know, I thought they liked to give comments.
Well, Minnehaw Creek won't. Sometimes they do, and sometimes they don't provide comments. It depends. If they're going to be involved in the process, sometimes they like to have all of you weigh in before they actually provide comments. This is probably a situation, particularly for Minnehaw Creek Watershed District, they're going to be concerned. And if the applicant moves forward and they have erosion or stormwater, they'll have to get a permit from them. But they usually don't weigh in so much when it comes to like a single-family home variance. Usually when it's a bigger project that involves stormwater, they might get more involved with it.
Pardon my ignorance, but I'm looking at that sentence on page 14. "Cantilevers were not included, and they count toward hardcover." Explain that for me, please.
All right, I want to read the sentence first because sometimes I send a report and then it gets adjusted. And I want to make sure I get it right.
It's at the bottom of page 14 of the packet.
Also, there was a notation in the proposal that the cantilevers were not included, and they count towards home. Oh, okay. First, cantilevers, is that something that needs to be defined?
Yes.
Okay, just to check. So cantilevers are where the house bumps out and to provide additional space for living. Just a second, I was trying to figure this. So in this case, if we are looking at this elevation, this part of the house, you can see the breaks in the wall. That's where there's a wall break. That part of the house is going to be bumped out. And so I believe, that's not my writing, but I believe my understanding from that sentence is that those count towards hardcover because the water can't be under that. That's, I think, what she's saying. So that's what she's talking about is where they're bumping out into the yard and taking up more space.
So hardcover discrepancy is likely to be more than what we're seeing here.
Yes. The biggest message I heard, and you can confirm with the applicant, is their intention is to stay under 40%. So they'll be working with staff to figure out what does that mean in terms of, you know, they have different options. How the driveway is configured, how the area under the porch is configured. So they're close enough that we can work with them to kind of make things work.
And on the hardcover side, you said we were under 40 currently, but close?
Yes, they are very close.
And could you just summarize one more time the proposed areas of the house where the hardcover would change and wouldn't?
Well, now you're. It's a good question. There's just a very, okay. So if I look at the existing survey, I was trying to make sure I didn't turn it off. So in this area, there is some part that is hardcover, but you, this is where the garage is getting expanded. So it kind of evens out in this area.
So that area where the garage is, is currently hardcover?
Right here in this square block. That's currently hardcover. And that's going away, but the new garage is going in that location. There's a small stoop right here. That's going away completely. That's where the house is getting bumped out, and there's no longer going to be a door on each side of the house. It's just going to be on one side of the house. In this area, there's a deck, and that area had been considered hardcover. So the part that is additional would be part of this proposed porch. According to the applicants, they said underneath here won't be hardcover. It'll be a traditional deck with a quarter-inch spacing, which means it doesn't need to count according to mound's policy. And as long as they don't put anything underneath it, then they wouldn't have to have that counted as hardcover. There is also some adjustment because this door is here, and it's moved back to here. So there's some small adjustment in this concrete walkway and how this is configured. Otherwise, I think the driveway is staying relatively the same.
One of my questions was, it's a three-car garage now. It's going to be made a three-car garage, isn't it? And there's only two cars?
They only can have, because of the hardcover, they won't be able to have a driveway that goes all the way over to.
Oh, so not gonna?
No, they're proposing this.
Okay.
Does gravel count as hardcover?
Yes. Because eventually it does compact enough that it can actually permeate through.
The depiction of the front elevation of the house that we received clearly, I think, clearly shows a three-car garage. I'm wondering if that's, maybe I just misunderstood.
No, what she's saying is they're not extending the driveway to the third. Because that, but actually shows a.
It does.
Right.
And the original survey that we had received had shown a three-car driveway, but with the hardcover being so close, there's no way that they can do that.
I didn't know if it was an error on there or not.
Yeah. So it's just, I think the original plan might have been to do that, but when the calculations come back, it's just not possible.
So I guess my first thought when I read this this afternoon was that this maybe should be something that should be tabled because of the hardcover considerations. It seems to me that there may need to be some changes made that potentially could impact the decision that we maybe would make here tonight. But now that I listened to you, I get that staff doesn't feel that way.
I don't think we feel, I feel like as long as they don't want a variance, then those are things that staff can work out and have worked out with many people.
You can nickel and dime hardcover around the driveway or something?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. And we'll have those worked out before we go to the council. We'll want to have those things clearly talked about in the conditions in my mind of, yes, you can't go over 40%. That does mean you can't do this and this and this to make sure that it's clear that those are the elements. But yeah, I don't, I don't think staff, even when we prepared the report, I don't think we felt like that was, as long as they don't want a variance, we can work all those things out because we do that on a regular basis with building projects all the time.
Just to be clear, so we're talking about a variance right now, but it's for a setback reduction. And you're saying if they don't want a variance, you're saying we wouldn't be discussing or the variance associated with hardcover is not in scope of what we're talking about?
That is not what they're requesting, so you're not being asked to weigh in on that. You're only being requested to weigh in on whether or not the porch can be, and deck can be constructed so that they're closer to the lake shore than the previous variance allowed.
On the topic of the rear setback then, could you help me understand, let's say we agree with the notion that there are practical difficulties, and what would stop them from requesting us waiving all the setback, for example? Why, what might make this one okay and all of it not okay?
So one of the elements of variance criteria, number three, is the variance requested is the minimum variance, which would alleviate the practical difficulty. And so that's where you walk through with an applicant the idea that this was really the minimum that they needed in order to achieve their goals. And so part of that conversation is, you know, how, if you're going to put on a four-season porch, how small can you get to make it even usable? Like if you, if they have to do it to the dimension it was today, is that really usable? Is that, does that make sense? Or if you're going to, is it reasonable that they would want to put it on? And how big is reasonable? So that's why you wouldn't waive all of it. You would just waive the minimum amount needed to do what it seems practical for it. Did that help?
It did.
Okay.
And I still, on the topic of other watershed district authorities, they would also have say in how far the setbacks need to be. They haven't commented, or they don't have any say, or?
No, they would comment, like Minnehaw Watershed District would be concerned about the erosion control plans, how much fill is being moved on the site? Is there fill being added, those kinds of things? They're typically not going to weigh, they could weigh in, but typically they're going to stick with those types of elements. So this kind of conversation is generally just the city's determination. DNR technically can weigh in, but the rule is 50. So as soon as we talk about doing a variance, we're already not doing what the DNR is. And they'd weigh in if they were significantly concerned, if we had a new building project, those kind of things. But these types of things, they typically don't weigh in on.
So we're talking about six feet.
So what's your feeling on number two in terms of the not conferring any special privileges on this house versus the neighboring homes? Are the neighboring homes in the same proximity? Do they all conform to the setback? Or it looked like one was a bit close, but I didn't measure it online?
Right. The challenge of that number two is that we usually look at it in terms of like what's special about this lot that's different from the lots near it. My understanding from attorneys is like just because the neighbor got it, we don't know what the circumstances were. We don't know what the year was. There's all kinds of other things. I'll be honest, like city feelings about things change over time. And so this, you could look at it as a situation while is like the house is where it is. And so if they wanted to add a porch, they can't do anything about it because the house is where it is. You'd want to put it on the back. It's reasonable that you'd want to put it in the back. What is the size? You also could look at it like, you know, this is the house, and there's nothing you can do. I'm sorry, but we don't want to have things go to, and we're just kind of perpetuating something that we want to do. That's why staff didn't weigh in because we can help with findings either way on terms of how this works or what's good or bad in the interpretation of, is this the kind of thing that the city is supportive of or not?
So that was actually one of my questions, too. I think the house to the east is not only closer to the lake, or the lake shore actually kind of curves in. And I didn't know if you knew the distance that they are setback.
I don't know that. I know that Sarah had looked into the files or was going to, and if she was going to let me know if they had a variance or some other reason. But she didn't provide me that. So I don't know that there's a specific reason why that house is situated the way it is.
I wasn't asking for why.
I don't know what the distance is.
And the current deck is how large? And how big was the setback from, the setback?
So they got a release of 13 feet from the 50, so that would what be 37 feet? And in terms of the size, I can pull up the survey.
Okay, further questions for Sarah? Pardon me, Rita.
I'm not insulted. No worries.
Thank you.
That's my sister's name. I didn't call that in my whole room.
So, okay. Did you hear?
Yeah, I did. So is there a difference whether it's a three-season porch or a four-season porch? Does that make any material difference to the variance?
That, it doesn't make a difference to the technicalities that are in the code. Past planning commissions have had that conversation about whether it matters. But there wasn't clear direction that is put in the code relative to that topic.
And the genesis of my question is if there's not going to be any installation in the bottom, and they've got this much, you know, quarter inch, and there's no installation, is that really?
Wait, are you talking the deck or the porch? Because that's two different things.
The four-season porch.
Is it, I believe, a four-season. So that'll be totally enclosed.
Oh, that will be totally, not the porch.
Right, I was talking relative to the deck.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Okay, further questions for Rita. Okay, hearing none. I assume the applicants are here. Would you like to approach the commission? Please come forward to the podium, state your name and your address.
My name is Paul Richard Wolf, Jr. My current address is 15847, the Net Street and over. And we are, we are the property owners of 4360 currently. It was my grandparents' place, so I'm third gener, third-generation Wolf. And yeah, we just kind of, we just kind of want to make this place our home, raise our, raise some future grandkids up here maybe and create some memories. I got a ton of memories from when I was a kid. I mean, I really don't have anything else to say. It's just that this property means an awful lot to me. And I've seen it, I've seen it deteriorate over the years because my cousin is, just kind of let it go to heck. And I just want to, I want, I want to make it nice. I want to make it nice to live in. And I'm just looking for that extra six feet of variance just to add extra living space. Nothing much. The practical difficulty just kind of just, I don't really have any options except for going back a little bit. That's why I got the application. So if you guys have any questions for me.
I have a question, but I'll just start it. When I review these, I always bring the property up in Google Earth and Google Street View and take a look at it. And then I drove out there tonight before the meeting. And the changes that I've seen since Google Earth image on, in July of '23 to today, you've obviously done a lot of work out there. It looks very nice. Just to acknowledge that.
Okay, further questions for the applicant?
I guess one question I guess I had was, did you look at alternate ways to put a four-season porch on the side? Because you have 13 feet on one side, 12 feet on the other side. Just reconfigure the side a little bit. I know you have a chimney on the one side, which kind of impedes.
I've looked at, I mean, without, without the variance, you know, you could just go that eight feet that we already have and just go eight feet by 24, but it's just kind of, kind of an unpractical living space. It's just more kind of like a hallway and extended hallway. And it's just, I didn't think it was very practical. So that's kind of why I'm, I'm just going for the porch look. I think it would make the building look a little bit more appealing to the lake.
And you want to look at the lake.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, I mean, you don't want to look at the side of that. Because I looked at that space too, though. I looked at it as well, and I thought, well, maybe you could hook around. But I really, as you stated, I don't, I don't know if there is any other way to go except for back. And yet you want to look at the lake, you know? I get that.
And my background is construction. Had my own business for over 20 years. Built probably what, eight of my own personal houses. And this would be the last one I probably built, so.
Are you planning to move into this home?
Yep. Yeah, we plan on selling our house and moving over and moving over here. That's the plan.
Thank you for stating that. I mean, I don't know if my opinion would change either way if you were going to rent it or have family live in it. But I just think that the fact that you want to make it for you, that helps understand the goal.
Right.
And I live on Black Lake as well, so I, and I'm probably about as close as you are to the water. I'm just on the other side of the bend. And so I know that some of these houses on this lake sit a little kitty-wonkish. But for the most part, it does look like they are all lined up pretty good except for that neighbor to the right side encroaches out a little bit more.
Yeah.
So I'm guessing they were in a similar situation just with how narrow the lot size is.
Further questions?
Have you spoke to the neighbors about your plans?
Yep, yep, I spoke to both of them. I've actually been working out there since last spring, last summer. My cousin has done zero yard work, lawn work. Trees were growing out of the foundation and brush and trees are, you know, on top of the house. So I spent a good couple of weeks clearing, clearing, cleaning up that stuff. And I got to know Ray as Ray, you guys probably know Ray, maybe? I don't know. He's on the one side. He's been doing remodeling for the last couple of years. And then Mary on the, on the right side. And I let them both know exactly what's going on. They're pretty excited, I think. You know, to get that property cleaned up because it's, it's not very appealing the way it sits right now. So yeah, I've spoken to both.
Okay, further questions? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you for your time.
Okay, discussion amongst the commission. Comments, thoughts?
Would you, can I ask, read another question?
Do you have any comment on unusual size or shape? I mean, I'm just trying to find the justification for practical difficulties. Reading here in your report, unusual lot size or shape, for example. How can I wrap my head around this being an atypical? I know it's a lot of record. I know it's an older lot. Seems small and oddly sized. Anything we could hang our hat on for that?
Yeah, so a couple of comments on findings affect. In reality, you just need one. You don't have to have a whole slew of them. Obviously, if we have more than one, that's always preferred. Uh, when we get to unusual circumstances, as I said, we talk about, we can talk about lot size, lot shape, placements of the building on the lot, you know, if they were starting over, it'd be a whole different conversation. But if you are going to do something that seems reasonable, this, as you mentioned, this is like the only reasonable place to put it. Um, those types of things. That's the kind of things that you would, you can't, you know, in terms of a lot, it probably it's related to the fact that, you know, this is sitting squarely on the lot, there's not one side or another that you could put it on the side of the lot and make it any bigger, those kinds of things.
If we were leaning toward approving this, it wouldn't seem like, uh, having trouble clearing the legal bar for practical difficulties in the findings, okay?
No, I think you can, I, we just need a few of them and we'll help write them as well. Um, the challenge that we have at this point is just understanding where we're at in terms of doing variances or not, um, just kind of where, where the situation lies of whether this seems reasonable or not reasonable. But I think you can talk about, potentially you can talk about, you know, the project seems reasonable size, this is the only variance that they need, those are the kinds of things you might cover. And then also note that this is your recommendation and then staff will look at it and try and see if, you know, there are any other elements to, to point to when we make the actual resolutions.
Further questions for Rita?
Not that I'm running, what?
Okay, further discussion, comments?
Actually, I have kind of a belated question for the applicants, if I may?
Sure.
Uh, as I look at this, the proposal here, I think I have this right, is three-bed, three, like two and a half bath or something like that? What is the home currently in terms of bed and bath?
Oh, it's, uh, one bath and three beds.
Fair enough, thank you.
Okay, other questions or comments? Okay, well, uh, if I understand correctly, we have three options. First would be to table this proposal seeking additional information or changes. The second would be approve their proposal with conditions and staff has seven of them. There perhaps could be more added by commission members. And that would include, um, then a recommendation of approval for the setback change. And then third, uh, disapproval of the, of the, uh, of the proposal primarily due to the setback issue. Did I get those right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, hearing those changes, chair would entertain a motion.
Well, to get the conversation started, I guess, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that the planning commission recommend approval of the application with the seven conditions set forth, um, by staff.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All right, discussion. Sir?
Yeah, I think it makes sense, I don't have any, any concerns.
Okay.
I think when we look at the expansion of the home and, and what they're creating, uh, because effectively they're taking some of the current living space, converting it to additional bed and bath space and then using this four-season porch to create additional living space. I think that's a reasonable expansion of the property and the way it's configured, there's really no other practical way to do it. And as I look at the map of the area overhead, it seems reasonably consistent. I think if it was much further, I might feel differently, but I think it seems reasonably consistent with the neighborhood and the character of the neighborhood overall, the way the other homes are situated. And so, uh, on that basis, I would vote to approve it.
Further discussion?
I think, oh, I was gonna say, I, you know, I'm all for the project. I do think that there is an undue, um, that threshold is met. The only concern that I have is, is just, again, looking at the encroachment of that variance and what that might mean to wetland protection of Black Lake. Um, but again, if we've sent something out and they haven't come back to us, and by them, I mean the, the watershed district, then I, I, I think I'm okay with it, but again, I think it's weird that we didn't hear anything back. So I just, I guess for me, it's, I, I've kinda hung up on that one little detail and I think I'm, I just don't know, Rita, could they come back in the meantime and say, nope, you know, we did review this and it does look like there's, that this variance may impede on some of the wetland of Black Lake? And then how do we move forward with that if we've approved it?
So generally, the practice has been that everybody receives the opportunity to provide comment and if they don't by the timelines, then we continue to move forward.
Okay.
Um, so I would be surprised if they would come back belatedly and say they could between now and the council. Typically, they get involved with the actual, like permitting that you would need to have, so erosion control, um, stormwater management, and they'll, they'll, they will have to work through those to the satisfaction of the Minnehaha Creek watershed district. So if there is concerns about water quality, that will come through the permitting process and they will make those things happen, whether or not you approve the variance.
Okay, and that's in there as the six steps, so I mean, I'm glad that it's noted. Um, and I, it sounds like we've, the city has done their due diligence to send that information out and no feedback has come back, so.
And as I stated, our practice, or my understanding over the last year is generally what has been happening is that we submit it and unless there's something large and complicated, like those bigger projects we're hearing, uh, an initial feedback of like, ooh, this is what we're gonna have to do, or they're gonna have to do these kinds of things, those we've been hearing initially, but even then, they won't make significant comments because they want the city to weigh in first before they weigh in. So we hear about it from the bigger, how do we handle stormwater and if we need to come up with a strategy? But otherwise, the smaller projects typically you take care of and then they go and apply. We do always encourage applicants to go and have a conversation, um, if we think that there's a concern or just to kind of start the process going. Um, so I'm not particularly concerned with this one because it feels like, um, fairly typical with this kind of a project that we wouldn't necessarily have heard something from any of the agencies, actually. Um, it's not unusual for these kind of situations where we hear very little comment because of the nature of the project, it's just one lot so small. Um, I think obviously if it was a lot closer, there might be concerns. But this distance is things we've seen in other places on other lots.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, further comments?
So, I guess, I'm torn a little bit. I came in kind of leaning against rejecting the variance based upon, you know, extending an existing variance. Yeah, we've already had that discussion a couple of times.
Yeah.
You know, the difference here is the neighbor to the east is actually further out versus kind of what we did before. So that kind of takes away from the argument of extending it further. I'm still kind of torn on, you know, did they meet the minimum? Did it have to be fourteen feet out there? Could have been ten feet out there, could have been twelve feet out there. You know, my fiancée's got a four-season porch that's twelve by twelve. Could have been a little bigger, yeah. But I guess I'm kind of leaning either way. I, I, I don't know. I don't know if it's strong enough argument to say deny it because they want an extra two feet out that they had to go when the neighbor's house is closer than theirs.
Yeah, and I'm glad you brought that up because that really did make me, I mean, I zoomed in and I've been looking at it quite a bit that, you know, that is such a weird peak, how it kind of triangulates right there. And it really does just add more to the, the undue burden piece in my mind. But yeah, I was kinda kind of on the fence too, but I think that, I think that i- i- if I was to vote yes for it, I feel like we would be, I'm confident that we would be consistent with we, what we have in the past. Like you said, I think this is a slightly different, uh, situation than what we've seen in the past and, and yeah, that neighbor is set close, closer to the lake than they would probably end up being if we were to approve it.
Yeah.
Okay, further comments? Hearing none, ready for the vote? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries, thank you. Thank you, so, folks. I'm reading, uh, that this will come to the city council either the ninth or the twenty-third of a, am I correct?
Yes, sir, I asked, um, Sarah about that, we'll have to let you know. Obviously, the ninth means we have to have a packet complete and ready for the council tomorrow. So I have to con, talk to her and say, see which way that we want to go with it.
And you would probably be well to go to that meeting. Just, you'd probably be well to go to that meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Great, okay. All right, moving on. Uh, planning case two-four dash zero-three. Review slash recommendation proposed amendments to mixed-use regulations in city code section one-two-nine dash one-three-nine and city code section one-two-nine. Definitions for consistency with twenty-twenty-three amendments to the twenty-forty mound comprehensive plan.
All right, good evening. Um, thanks for all the good discussion last time we met, which was only a couple of weeks ago. Um, we were able to make adjustments to the mixed-use districts in that time. We will be bringing the remaining items at your next meeting, it just wasn't enough time um, to craft those well in the ensuing time. Relative to the mixed-use district updates, I did make some changes to what we had talked about or what I had presented at the meeting when we had our discussion. Uh, the biggest one is, uh, just limiting the height to thirty-five feet, which is what we had talked about. Um, so we don't need the table anymore. Um, we can just say height is thirty-five feet. Uh, there was also a discussion last time about whether or not we needed to try and get at kind of bulk of a building and making sure a bulk, um, doesn't get too large. Um, and I know there was a conversation about whether we really needed to do that, given the densities and just doing some calculations. It felt like it would be better for us to have something than not have something because you could, if you had a large enough site and you had enough, um, units, you could still do, um, a number of units, like if you did a two-acre site and you had mixed-use on the bottom, that's thirty-six units and I would think eighteen units on a floor would actually feel pretty big, uh, if we did that. So the recommended, recommended language, um, would be that you would limit the facade on any one facade to be no longer than two-hundred feet. That number came from a couple of things. One is that as we looked at precedents, um, there was, the smallest precedent we've found was about two-hundred feet, it ranged up to three-fifty. More what I used actually was kind of measuring the buildings. Uh, so like True Value Hardware, the part of the wall that's facing the trail is about a hundred and eighty-five feet. Mount Marketplace, the parks, you know, I just measured, just trying to see how big things were. Um, and it kind of went to a number that seemed like bigger. Um, but not as big as the length of Mount Marketplace, the front of Commerce Place, the wall, one of the walls of Artessa. Um, and so that's where I landed on two-hundred feet. Can go up or down. The idea is, we're just trying to present, prevent, um, having a whole big wall that is one big gigantic wall. And you may never get to that point, it would only occur, and I wrote it very specifically, you would only have that happen if it was a mixed-use building that had residential in it. So if you had a mixed-use building that had retail and office and that's mixed-use, this doesn't qualify, really just focus on the residential component. I also wanted to address the question that was raised about whether or not we should really retain the mixed-use corridor designation, um, because really in the comp plan, we only have one mixed-use. I did note on your packet on page twenty-nine, there are a couple of uses that are different between the two districts. Um, the uses that are in there, a few of those actually reflect existing uses, so I'm not sure we can just, uh, we can't just eliminate it and I don't think we really want those uses in the core of the downtown. And so my thought is, it's there, it's been working, so we can leave it. We can certainly have a conversation to change it. But that's really the only difference between the two districts right now are those four uses. Um, and again, that just reflects boat, um, automobile repair, boat and marine sales, kind of that corridor along Commerce south of downtown just has a few more uses. With that, I can answer any questions. If you're comfortable with this language, then a recommendation, um, to, um, make the amendment to the city code with these proposed changes, uh, would be great. And then we will publish a public hearing, um, to have an, the official, um, consideration at the city council. Not next week, it would be a couple of weeks out.
Rita, this is a comp plan guidance or is this city code?
This is city code.
Okay, so if somebody wanted to do something that was two-hundred-and-fifty feet, they would have to come and ask for a variance?
Yes, or do a PUD. Technically, they'll have to do a PUD anyway because this district requires a PUD, but it would have to come through and be specifically noted.
Okay. So then that would come through here and it would go through city council?
Yes.
Okay.
So you'd have the opportunity to consider that as part of a project if anybody else, it did want to go bigger.
I like the idea of having something that we, that is, is more stringent that we can back off on. Because going the other way is hard to wrangle in.
Yes. And there was at least some basis in the numbers. Tried to look at the buildings as best I could. Any other questions?
Further questions for Rita?
And so just to be clear, we landed on for the MUD and the MUC districts that they will just stay as they are, those are not changing.
That is my recommendation, if you would like to approach it differently, we can.
No, I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that was the.
Correct, so there's no change to the code as a result of it? That stays the same, but I wanted to make sure that we knew that I had looked at it and there was a reason why that was going to stay.
Further questions? Further comments amongst the commission members? Okay, hearing none, um, it's my understanding that staff is seeking a recommendation to city council to approve suggested changes as distributed.
So I will make a motion to approve recommended changes to mixed-use district as distributed in today's packet pages twenty-nine to thirty-five.
That's a recommendation to city council.
Yep.
We have his motion.
I'll second.
We have a second. Do we have further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Moving on to old and new businesses. Kathy, anything from a council liaison standpoint?
I do have a couple of things. Um, you've probably all noticed that the hybrid flushing started yesterday. So that'll go on for probably a month before that ends. Maybe, I'm not sure how much you all know about the, the bills that are going through, called the missing middle housing bill. Well, basically, what these bills do, it's HF four zero zero nine and SF three nine six four. It essentially eliminates local zoning authority related to housing along with removing any resident participation. So the council did unanimously approve last week a resolution opposing this overreach. And if you haven't studied up on it, there, I could have Sarah send out the LMC consequences from this bill, it's, it's a pretty tough bill. I mean, there'd basically be nothing going through planning.
Can I ask a question about that? So I read the article in the Laker or whatever the local paper was and it said two residences per, per, per site, which seemed very odd to me, did they mean per acre? Does it mean?
No.
So if you had a six-thousand square foot lot, some.
Fifty feet, so it's a really kind of an appalling bill. The name of it is pretty misleading, you know? Uh, this is one of those bills where I scratched my head and go, did anybody actually read this bill up in St. Paul before? But anyway, I recommend, um, I'll have Sarah send this out.
Yeah, I'll be great.
It's, it's really interesting. And then I can have Sarah also send out the resolution that we passed last week.
I would really like that.
Yeah, and then you can reach out to the, to your legislators and representatives once you've read it.
So just to, um, the latest I heard last Thursday was that that bill was dead, but we will verify that and she can still send out the information because that, that just means it's dead for this year. It doesn't mean that it hasn't come back.
Good.
But the latest I had heard, um, before I had a, a joint meeting with the planning commission and council from that city administrator is that they had set it aside for this year.
Well, that's good.
And they were just gonna focus on accessory dwelling units, actually.
I'm glad to hear that because when I checked.
Verify that, because that was the last I heard, but.
Yeah, last Tuesday, they were still
Yes.
tweaking it, but, but it still wasn't good for studies.
I would like to read it because the, the paper, the article in the paper just seemed inconceivable and, and actually not, not possible, like, like from a building code perspective.
Yeah, it's crazy.
And so I'd like to know what it really was and I just assume it's not dead. It's, it's hibernating until V-two comes around, so.
That's your point.
Been, been, an evolution for a number of years, versions of this. This is just the latest iteration of this.
But, thank you, that's good to hear, but I will have Sarah send this out because it is pretty interesting to read and it may resurface, as you said.
It won't, if, if it's truly done for the year, it won't resurface this year. Because that means it's.
Could resurface this fall.
No, they only have, there's only one legislative section a year.
Okay, well, this is good news.
But next year is still relevant to me.
This is, so normally at this time of year, from January on, um, everybody's tracking the bills as they go through and it's evolved some. Um, but as I said, the latest I had heard is that, that they weren't going to move it farther any, eh, further anymore this time, but obviously things may, um, happen.
It had a lot of opposition from cities, um, when we were up at the Capitol for water. I mean, that's what everybody was talking about. So it'll be interesting for you to read, I hope that's the case that it is dead for the year. But maybe we can have Sarah indicate that.
Yeah, I will.
Or send it out.
Yep, that's my plan, is that I will email my folks if they need to verify it's dead.
That'd be great. And then, um, finally, music in the park returns again this year and the first concert will be on Thursday, June thirteenth. And it'll be Chris Kelly. And then there'll be another one on July eleventh and August eighth. And that's all I've got tonight.
Thank you. You aware of anything from staff, Rita?
Sarah did not pass any messages on to you all.
Okay.
Kathy, can I ask if there's any updates on the water situation from, when you were there?
I mean, basically what's, and you can always, the, the water on our website is completely updated.
Okay.
But, you know, we did just get another, I think, almost fifty thousand and we're waiting for the legislator to actually allow us to spend it. That's what we're waiting on right now, but good things are happening. I mean, it's still gonna be a long while, but good things are happening.
Fifty thousand dollars, fifty million? Did I miss here?
I think we got almost a million.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say fifty thousand isn't.
No, I think we just got almost a million. And, but again, we did just update that on the website. So maybe check that and you can see, but right now, we are kind of on a hold, waiting for legislator to just tell us when we can spend the money. legislator to just tell us when we can spend the money and then we can go to planning. Planning the facility.
What, just for my clarification, so what is the projected need for, for the water remediation? Is it, is it a million, is it two million or three million or?
You mean, in total cost?
How much do you think we would need?
I believe it was thirty-six million.
Yeah, because I was thinking it was twenty-six million.
Yeah.
Maybe thirty-six.
Okay.
Yeah. And so we're still about eighteen million short. But they've been receptive to us and to several other towns.
Okay.
But we're still two years out, even if we keep getting granted money. But we'd love to get to the point where we can get it into a planning.
I just put a twenty-five-hundred-dollar whole-house system in because I didn't think we'd ever get it and now we probably will, just because I did that so you can thank me.
Thank you for doing that.
Well, you know, the other thing too is that if you're watching the website, there are tests you can do. And if you have a water, a water softener at home, most likely that's taking care of mosher magnes. You know, I've tested mine and I have no problems at all.
Okay, mine was not, not even remotely close.
Not even remotely. And there are different, like on the island, the manganese is so much higher.
Did you do the dipstick one? Did you actually send it out for testing the water?
From the pipes.
I was actually able to get water quality reports from the city because they monitor the wells so closely.
For your household?
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
But you can mail out for a test. They're fifteen dollars.
You could just look at my bathtub and tell how much manganese is in it.
Does manganese show up?
Yeah, it's brown and greasy.
Is that bad?
Yeah.
Where, what portion of mound do you live in?
I'm right by the library.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's strange because I'm on the island too and I've never experienced an issue. So I was surprised always to hear that how much on the island is bad. And we, I mean, granted, we have chemicals, so we have an indoor pool, so we're always checking it. But, you know, my husband has swam in that indoor pool every day for twenty-five years and he's never had an issue. So, I mean, we're constantly testing, but again, it makes a difference when you're putting chlorine in the pool as well. It can offset it. But I don't ever notice a difference between our pool water and our, our shower water either. So, I mean, we might have just been locked out for where we are, but when this topic came up, I was surprised how many people do have issues. Because we just, we didn't.
For sure.
We use a ton of water, you know? Constantly putting water in that pool.
But go to the website and it's all updated for, if you're interested in checking into it.
Okay, further matters to be brought forth, commission? Hearing none, chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have motion, second, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thanks, thank you for attending.